Okay, let's go ahead and get started with our pre-meeting. So we'll go ahead and start with the legislative review and Mr. City Manager, I'll let you go ahead and get started with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got one item I need to go over with you when we get to the agenda review as well. If I could put a sticky note on that, if you will.
Yes, you betcha.
But in terms of talking about the legislative update and so forth, a couple of things that we wanted you to be aware of, first of all, what some of the progress is as it relates to the, you know, the travels of the various bills that we're interested in and that kind of thing, but also with regard to one of the pieces of legislation that we have not had the opportunity to talk about that I wanted to get your take on and ultimately your, you know, your blessing to advocate for, if you will. And so that particular bill is with respect to the special taxation district that has been out there at least in idea form for quite some time, but furthermore, as it relates to a lot of the progress lately, this is probably the first session that I've seen where this bill has had more traction than others. I'm not sure if it's been introduced and it's passed that threshold quite yet, but indeed it certainly has some legs this session, and I didn't want to get too far ahead of you without visiting about it with you. As we talked about in the legislative dinner, the basic idea is that a city or a conglomeration of cities and towns, a district, or a combination of district and cities, the county and so on, can participate in creating basically an electorate district that allows for the people within that district to put forward a question as it relates to a cap tax that they'd like to see happen, or an optional tax that they'd like to see happen. It does give cities and towns some flexibility to approach the electorate in a way that they've not been able to do in the past. And so it still requires a vote of the people, it still requires a blessing of the commission to make it happen, which would be pursuant to a hearing that the commission would host on the matter, and with regard to the borders of the district and so on. Certainly, I would advocate and WHAM would advocate that this is, again, an expansion of tools that municipalities can take advantage of should it pass, that we'd like to see have some traction and discussion with regard to its merits. So that really is the only piece of legislation that we have a high interest in. We, as in myself, WHAM, et cetera, that would potentially be beneficial from an available tool standpoint. I'd be happy to take any questions about that, and then I can go into some, sort of the status report on some of the other pieces that we've been following.
Any questions for Carter? Doesn't look like it.
Okay, thank you. Then I will try to advocate for this then if it's okay with all of you, and I'll try to keep you apprised of what's going on, okay? As it relates to some of the other things that are going on, direct distribution is progressing. It has passed introduction, which, as you know, depending on the interpretation of the piece of legislation, can actually have a higher threshold than normal during a budget session. Nonetheless, direct distribution is moving forward unadulterated, and we're grateful for that. Interestingly enough, I don't know if you recall when we had a visit with Visit Casper and her colleagues regarding the film legislation and the request that they had for us to pass a resolution in support of not only creating a program, but hopefully seeing the enabling legislation come to pass. That enabling legislation failed today, so it does not look like it'll pass in this session unless someone picks it up on an individual basis, which is highly unlikely, given some of the orders of the day that the legislature has to take care of. So that did fail. The pharmaceutical bill that we've been talking about did pass introduction, and so, you know, likely WHAM will be actively opposing that bill, and I would certainly advocate for opposition as well, continued opposition in that regard, given its cost implications. Industrial siting is passing introduction as well. We're monitoring that bill to make sure it doesn't get worse, if you will, in regards to its implications for that program that we've been able to take advantage of in the past. So hopefully it won't, you know, transition into something more challenging for cities and towns to support. Fire Fund A is passing, and as a matter of fact, passed committee the whole recently on the Senate side, which means that it now goes to the House, and if it continues unabated, then it looks like it could have a clear path to coming to pass. Those are the major pieces of legislation that we are concerned about and wanted you to be aware of. Obviously, the budget bill is a big piece of concern for us. ARPA is a big deal for us, and if you'd like, I'd be happy to remind you some of the ones that we were mostly concerned about as it relates to ARPA, if that's okay, unless there's other legislative-oriented questions that I could try to address.
Go ahead, Bruce.
I was just curious if you, do you have any insight as to why that film bill didn't pass?
You know, I'm not sure. Given that it's a budget year, it's quite possible that that piece of legislation just didn't feel enough like a budget item to really feel appropriate for passage out of the committee, but that's speculation on my part, not having watched that hearing this evening, but earlier today. So I'm not totally sure, but that'd be my guess.
It's kind of a bummer for us.
Yeah, it is. For all the state, actually. I think that's a nice resource to tap into.
Anything else?
All right. In terms of ARPA, just a couple of things to remind you of. That local government support program, which is program number 10 in the governor's list of programs, you know, broad programs he wanted to support, we are hopeful that that stays intact as it travels through the Joint Appropriations Committee and ultimately through some sort of budget legislation. You'll recall that we believe we are well-suited to participate in that program, mostly because we have close partnerships with other municipalities and other government entities that we think we can propose projects for that would take advantage of those virtues that they hold important, according to the White Paper. The problem is $50 million for the first tranche is really not enough, and I'm hopeful that we can advocate, that WHAM will advocate, for a second tranche of equal amount during the time that that second payment from the federal government comes forward in May. So that'll be what I would like to see happen, and certainly when we're at WHAM next week, I hope we can communicate that pretty broadly and thoroughly, if you will. The destination-defining program is also one that I'm excited about, mostly because it includes priorities that identified the Ford Wyoming Center and the North Platte River as being worthy of major investments through that program. And so I'm really looking forward to seeing how that turns out. And again, when we're at WHAM next week, I hope we get to communicate real broadly and thoroughly as to our support for that to continue.
Carter, if you could get a question real quick?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Amber.
Backtracking just a second, Carter, to the local government piece before the destination piece, can you remind me, is there, was there a, in the White Paper, was there a suggested mechanism by which those funds would be deployed, or like any programmatic elements in terms of how we would apply for those funds, that sort of thing? Has that been laid out at all yet, or is that still sort of nebulous?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, the only thing that they've really done so far is identify the Office of State Lands and Investments as being the facilitating entity. And so I think that that's probably the right thing to do, the right agency to work with, but as far as some of the program rules, aside from the general sort of objectives that they want these dollars to accomplish, they have not been material yet.
Thank you.
The other thing that we spent some time with the legislators talking about was a housing program. Right now, the program is built around the idea of creating a fund that homeowners in a particular employment class and I think even marital status, if I remember correctly, could be eligible for, in terms of the, you know, the interest income that that fund would create, I think the corpus is in the neighborhood of $20 to $22 million. My hope is that with the second tranche of funding, we can look at housing again, and I hope that they will consider direct investment that would leverage the creation of housing. As I mentioned at the dinner pursuant to a question from Senator Scott, the biggest conversation that I hear from developers over and over again is, how can I get utilities? How can I get utilities paid for? How can I get access to utilities and so on? Streets and whatnot. In my estimation, if there is a good bang for the buck as it relates to local government participating somehow in the facilitation of housing development, even workforce housing development, it would be on the side of utilities. And frankly, I hope we can also preach that gospel down in Cheyenne of saying, hey, the fund is great, but with that second tranche, let's get some direct investment in the hands of people who can make housing happen. And hopefully that will have some resonance with our partners. The White Elephant Program, it has a different title now, I think it's called Replace and Revitalization, is intriguing to me, particularly if it also means that we can take down a building and make that resulting space more marketable. I think we have some assets like that in our community that hopefully we could take advantage of with these dollars, and those are certainly some of the questions I'm going to be asking when we're in town next week and Cheyenne next week. So with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that feels like the marching orders that I think I've heard from the council, or at least I've seen support with respect from the council for. And if there's other directives or other things that you'd like to have us tuck into our hip pockets on the way to Cheyenne next week, I'd certainly be happy to take that direction.
Anybody have comments? Steve.
I had noticed that they, the governor had put in into his budget $7 million for suicide prevention to be able to man our center here 24/7, and the legislature has already cut that out. Do you know what that was all about?
I don't, but I'd be happy to make note of that and see what else I can find out.
Yeah, because I think that's a very, with the rate that's here in Wyoming and everything, I think that's a very, very important program, and I'm just really interested in why the legislature wanted to take that out.
Lisa.
Does WHAM have like a call to action for these bills so that we can either support them or not support them, so that it's kind of an easy email that we can send to the legislatures?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, that's, they definitely do. And while I haven't seen any of those put out in this session yet, because we're relatively early into the session, I suspect we will see those, and you will all get those, and you can decide on an individual basis what you'd like to do with those respective, and I think they even do call them calls to action. So yeah, be looking for those, because we'll certainly forward them to you.
Any other comments, questions for Carter? Agenda review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, members of the council, for that conversation. I appreciate that. We do have an amendment, I guess you'd call it, with respect to the liquor renewal report tonight that you'll be approving. We got word today that the entity that holds a license for the DBA Spotlight Lounge is not going to be renewing their license after all. Do you remember the name of that entity by chance? Grace Partners, thank you. So in your memo, you do not see that broken out, and that's only because we learned today that that was going to be their route they wanted to take. So the license that Grace holds, which is what kind of a license, do you remember? What is it?
Bar and Grill.
Bar and Grill, okay. Sounds like it'll be turned back to the city, and of course, the council can determine what it is that you'd like to see happen with that bar and grill, given that it would be unclaimed after April 1. And that I said, I had mentioned in the terms of an amendment, I would suggest that that's probably the appropriate thing to do, because your reports aren't even filed and shared with the public as is, so that probably would be the course of action that I would recommend this evening for that particular license.
Any questions for Carter on this? Any other updates?
Mr. Mayor, the only, excuse me, I almost coughed. Not purposely timed, I promise, but I will be attending the regular business meeting from my office on Zoom. If you need me for anything, I'll be listening in and be ready to help out if you have some question for me or whatever. Then I'll be back for exec.
Go ahead, Lisa.
I'd like to see if it's possible if the council would be willing to move the inspectors' license contractor board to another meeting. I won't be able to be here next week, and since I'm going to be the council liaison, I think that it would be beneficial for me to be able to attend that meeting.
While we're on the subject, I think that should be rethought anyway. She's a real estate agent and probably shouldn't be on a board with contractors that she employs and uses. So we might want to rethink that, since we are, we have literally people get up and walk out of this room for conflicts, so that's a conflict.
Mr. City Attorney, could we probably have the legal? Is real estate a conflict?
If Councilmember Inga Bretson actually employs a number of these, which would make probably some sense if you're doing remodels or updating or needing some work done on some of your properties, there may be a conflict there because you would be then judging people that you don't employ versus those you do employ, and so there would at least be the possibility that someone could infer that there's some type of a double dealing or conflict of interest arising there. So that may be something to consider, but I don't know the extent that, you know, Councilmember Inga Bretson doesn't do that.
Okay. So, oh, go ahead.
I'm not exactly clear on who all is on the board. I just know a couple of people, and I don't work with them, but I don't know everybody that's on the board, so.
So I'll tell you, since we've literally got like eight minutes before our regular meeting, I'm going to hold this and then I'm going to have, we can have a private conversation to find out what that looks like, and then maybe we can do a little bit more investigating on that subject, if that works. Does that work? Okay, all right, thank you.
But also, as a follow-up, sir, I'm opposed to putting it off any longer. It's been long enough, and the actual gentleman who started this whole thing is going to be here next week to testify to this council about how we got here in the first place. And so, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it should go on as it's been scheduled for over a month now.
Well, first I want to find out if Lisa can or cannot be on it. That's first, first and foremost. And so if I can figure that out first, then I can, then if there's no conflict, she remains on the board. And so I'm not going to move it until I figure that out first. So that's my, that's my first job. And then, and then I'll figure out what we'll do next week as we move forward with that. Does that make sense?
It does, but this isn't about the Contractor Licensing and Appeals Board. This is about us possibly changing ordinance to allow our inspectors to have some wherewithal when these contractors are not doing what they're supposed to be doing. So it's literally not a licensing and appeals board issue.
Go ahead, Carter.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I do agree that the fundamental question at heart here is whether or not citation authority should be more clearly defined with respect to the staff and what those ground rules are and so on. That's absolutely the direction I need in creating that ordinance. The secondary issue, however, is that if that answer is yes, we do want that citation authority to be more structured and more clear and teeth in the ordinance and so on, I would recommend that the Board of Examiners function be considered rather critically so that that appeals process is better defined as well, which I think would have to, we'd have to evaluate what their roles would be that they keep and the roles that they would lose that currently they may have. So it's definitely a secondary issue, not the main issue, but I think we have to address that as well.
Okay, yeah. And maybe that's what the direction I was going, I was going around quite a bit away, but I understand. So I want to solid, I want to rectify this situation, the concern that Bruce has brought up, and so when I get that figured out, whether that, whatever that is, then we can move it, whatever we need to do, but I want to get that figured out.
Maybe one suggestion I could offer, Mr. Mayor, is if in fact you do need to make a change on the board or you don't. One way or the other, council can at least, at the very, very least, take testimony that evidently a citizen of yours is prepared to deliver, and then tackle the heart of the question in a little more detail and a little more energy and effort at another time, if that pleases the council. So you have some options. You can certainly, you know, make those changes as you see fit, but if we do have a citizen that wants to come and visit with the council, I would suggest you could at least take that testimony if you wanted to wait on everything else, or not, whatever.
So take that testimony next week, is that what you're saying?
Right.
Okay, so we can still take that testimony from this, and then we can go from there?
And we can, we can tackle the heart of the matter that we just described here at another time, if it pleases your group here.
Is the council okay with that, if we did it that way? Okay, all right, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I appreciate your help on that, Carter. Any other agenda review items? Okay, we'll take about a four-minute recess. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. Before we begin this evening, I'd like to remind everyone to please silence their cellphones. I now call the February 15, 2022 Regular Council Meeting to order. All members of, our council members are present. The council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable, Channel 192. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do want to note that our screen is out, so we will be doing things more just vocally when we vote, so sorry about that. Chair to entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the February 1, 2022 Regular Council Meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on February 9, 2022.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Nail, seconded by Vice Mayor Freel. Any amendments? Okay, please cast your vote. Oh, excuse me, all voting nay? And all voting aye? Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
I'll get this one way or another. Chair to entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the February 1, 2022 Executive Session.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Inga Bretson, seconded by Councilmember Kathy. Any amendments?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'll abstain from this vote.
Thank you, we have an abstention. Any other abstentions? Any nay votes? Aye votes?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
An abstention of Councilmember Johnson noted, motion passed.
The chair to entertain a motion to approve by minute action the February 15, 2022 Bills and Claims as audited by City Manager Napier.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Pollock, seconded by Councilmember Nail. Any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye? Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Thank you. Now is the time that we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we do ask the following. Please state your name and address. Direct all questions and comments to the mayor and only the mayor. No personal attacks on staff or council will be tolerated. Council will not respond to any personnel matters. These will all be referred to our city manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by council members, and presentations are limited to five minutes, and there will be no duplication of speakers or extensions on any money talking. Please note that public hearings and ordinances have their own comment period, so please hold your comments on those items until we reach them. So the mic's open if anybody wants to come up.
Thank you, Ray. My name's Kevin Murphy. Believe it or not, my great-grandpa put the first cement basement in Casper 123 years ago. So the Murphys go back a long time. The reason I'm here, I heard a rumor today that the building I'm in, it's called the Casper Business Building, I was with, I'm in wealth management, and I've been doing it for 41 years. We moved our office into that building right around 2008, and we built out our own floor, on the fifth floor. We put in over $200,000 to build out our space. What I'm hearing is that our building might be sold to the city and the police department, and we love our Casper police, but I'm hearing that there's a chance they could be moving into that building, and I have no idea where we would move our office if that happens. Ours was built specifically for wealth management, it's a beautiful office, and I looked at downtown, I looked today, Ray, I looked at 12 different spots, just in case this happened, where would we go? I can't find anything. It's so, I hate to say it, but I love this town. I want to die in this town, but it's so depressing what we have in downtown Casper for buildings, businesses like ours. We have over 1,200 clients, we manage over $600 million, we have the largest wealth management practice in Wyoming, probably in part of the Western US. We have so many clients come in from Sheridan, Gillette, Cheyenne, come in to see us. They have underground parking, it's been wonderful, it's worked out well. I will say this, the part of that building that is the best is the part that not only us but other people built out. It wasn't Wyoming Financial that built it out, we came in and did that ourselves. So we probably don't have any control, they're probably going to say, you know, the Casper Police is going to take the first, what, two or three floors I'm hearing, and move their vehicles into that parking unit, but all I'm asking you is think about where are we going to go? And I don't want to move to Sheridan, we have a Stiefel office there, I like Sheridan, I got family there, but I'd like to live and die in Casper. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor Pacheco, and members of the council. My name is Casey Quinn, and I'm the representative for Blue Peak in Casper in Wyoming. Blue Peak is a new fiber optic company, and we plan to do a complete infrastructure overlay of the entire city, and we're hoping to lay about 320,000 feet of line just this year. I'm really just here to introduce myself and to ask you to use me as a resource. We are working closely, you know, with the city engineer to ensure this is as smooth a process as possible, but we will be in your constituents' easements soon, and despite our best efforts and intentions with how large a project this is, there's always opportunity for hiccups along the way. There's a lot of ways for the community to reach out to our company, but in the event that you have constituents reaching out to you with problems, issues, please call, email me, I gave my information to the clerk to give to you all, and I will deal with any issue personally and as efficiently as possible. And I also ask to call me for anything else, you know, we could do a high-level overview of what we're doing in your wards. Other than that, we are extremely excited to be in Casper and bring in some affordable, high-speed internet. Other than that, I'll take some questions.
Yeah, is there any questions for Representative, yeah, Lisa, Councilmember Inga Bretson?
Are you representing yourself or a different entity here in Casper? So are you just laying fiber for Blue Peak, or are you subcontracted by somebody else?
Mayor, we are, I am a representative of Blue Peak, and it is Blue Peak Fiber, in which we will be subcontracting to lay that fiber.
Any other questions? Yeah.
Just a comment. Welcome. It'll be really good for our constituents to have another option. Competition's a wonderful thing, and so welcome, I'm glad you're here.
Yeah, just to reiterate, thank you so much, we appreciate you. Yeah, just reiterate, thank you so much, we appreciate you guys coming in, and like Councilmember Nell said, capitalism and competition is really good, so.
Mayor, thanks for having us.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Anybody else?
Hello? Hello? My name is Mike West. I actually live in bar none, and I do a lot of business here, and I'm a small business owner, and I'm speaking on behalf of a few other people here in the audience. I don't know, you guys say the, excuse me, having lots of other, you know, entities other than a monopoly, how is it that our single hospital here is the only one here in town? They bought up everybody, and we've gotten thrown out of the hospital for trying to see our loved ones, and we've had no other choice. I just have some questions and maybe some thoughts about that, I mean, why, why is it that we're not allowed to see our loved ones when there's no mask mandates? And, I mean, we know everything's like, pretty much done now, but yet the hospital, they won't allow more than one person in to see your loved ones when they come in on an ambulance?
So, one, thank you so much for coming up here. What I can tell you, and this isn't going to be, going to blow you off, what I'm going to tell you, I'll tell you the truth, one, obviously the city doesn't do a whole lot with the hospital. It used to be county-owned, but it was sold, and it's a private-owned company now, and so, you know, part of that is, is that they get to do and choose how to, their regulations of what they want to do, which may not always be what we like or what we want. I sympathize with you, when my dad was in the hospital last year, I was unable to go and visit him when he was really sick because of the policy that they had, so I understand where you're coming from. The city unfortunately really has no jurisdiction over a private company like that and what they do. So I hear what you're saying, and I think this council sympathizes with the fact that we understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, and then I, and then one more thing, the public sidewalk, I thought was a public sidewalk there, I was informed by law enforcement that it's not, they actually own the sidewalk there too, and I know our tax money goes to fund that hospital, so how is it that the people have no say with, if it's a private business, I get that, you know, because I'm a, I'm a small business myself.
Yeah, and, and I know you understand, and I know you, you understand the, of far as a private business and, and what far, as much the government can and cannot do, and, you know, we sympathize with you, and we want to make sure that you know that the government, you know, we try to stay as out of, as much of that type of stuff as possible, for sure, so.
So how, how do we get another hospital or another entity? Because I know there used to be one on the west side of town, and then they sold and they bought, and they bought it, bought that up, and they're taking over everything in Wyoming.
You know, I think the, the problem with, with it is, is just the size of our community, the, the need for only one type of, that size of a hospital. You know, they, they've tried to, I think other places have tried to come in medical, but it's really difficult just because of the size of our community and the need for that, and so it's difficult for people to come in and do those things, and so I know it's difficult, and so I understand exactly what you're saying.
Well, thanks, I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, I just want to say thank you for coming in, and I know it's a lot of the time you get, you know, just a comment or face value of somebody coming in, but I understand where you're coming from, and we sympathize with you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Hi, my name is Sarah Bieber, I'm resident here in Casper. I kind of wanted to come in on his statement. The policies and the COVID policies at Wyoming Medical Center are concerning for the community. They aren't, they aren't structured to allow access to a commodity, which is within, I think, the city council's ability to ordinate some kind of something, or at least not use the police force to enforce their COVID restrictions. It is hard to tell a nine-year-old whose grandmother is dying that he can't go see them. They don't allow visitors under the age of 12. They can tell birthing mothers you can't have your religious belief here, you can't have your quorum of people that you need to have while you're having a baby, but they can mandate their employees to work with positive COVID tests? That's not okay, that's not normal. It's not normal to make anybody work under any sickness. It's heartbreaking and it's difficult, and I understand your guys' position that it is a private business, but the community is struggling to figure out where we balance having only one hospital, and now it's pushing people into, I don't know, like back alley doctors, searching stuff on the internet and prescribing themselves and doing what they will because they don't want to go to the hospital, because they're scared of becoming prisoners at the hospital. That's, that's not community care. They have lost such a workforce that they are now dependent on travelers to a high degree, which then takes your care of the community down substantially, doesn't allow them to actually provide care for the patients here because they don't have the community grounding that the nurses here have had. It's, it's frustrating, it's difficult, I, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. I know maybe a couple of comments may come here from council members, so I'm going to start over here, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry you're going through this, I'm sorry you folks are going through this. I, I'm telling you, unless I'm dying, I would never go into a hospital, personally. They, they're owned by Banner, who is a nationwide company, and when they put a rule in place, it's nationwide, and so our little communities get affected by these big corporate giants, and it stinks, and it's not fair, and I'm with you, I understand. As far as this council, there's literally nothing we can do. That would be like me going into that gentleman's private business and telling him who he can allow to come through his door and who he can't. We just don't have that kind of power, and if we did, that'd be dangerous, as you know, and I know it stinks, and as a community, you know, you're talking probably hundreds of millions of dollars someone would have to come invest in our community to build another hospital, and I just don't know that there's enough infrastructure here to support that, so I don't know that we're ever going to get to see it. There are other hospitals in, in other places, I, I do know that because I use them, so I'm sorry, my heart breaks for you, but it stinks.
Mr. Mayor, I just had to comment to that. It, that speaks directly to what I, when you have a town, a community, that's not even willing to utilize the facility that we have here for care, like at what point, they can say who can and can't come through their doors, but we can't say, it needs to be open to everybody regardless?
And I, again, as if, what Councilmember Nell, we understand, we hear, this, you know, this is a forum, you guys can come here and voice your concerns, there's nothing that we can do, but we certainly understand frustration. I know, I experienced it last year with my dad, and I know it's very frustrating, and I know there's a lot of anger, and I know there's a lot of those feelings and sentiment that are out there right now, and I think everybody's tired of the pandemic, I think everybody's tired of everything that's going on, and hopefully to pray that this ends quickly and things somewhat go back to normal, would be nice.
Is there any laws that we have in place that they are possibly violating by doing what they're doing?
Not, not to my knowledge, short of following a private business policy that they're doing, that I don't know, I'm not an attorney, obviously, but I don't know of any law that they're breaking, per se. Thank you so much, though, so sorry.
Just real quick, I would assume they carry a business license like any other business, their private business? Don't you guys issue business licenses? I know you guys say we can't restrict private business, but you do all the time. There's rules, regulations, policies tied to business licenses, inspections, all sorts of stuff. There's, it's time to think outside the box, that if we don't have a rule in place, think about one. Think about one that needs to be tied to that business license, that you cannot interfere with a person's personal liberties in order to enter your establishment. I mean, I, I don't know what it looks like, but when, if, if you're, I don't think you can equate a bar to a community service, but that hospital's a community service. And I think a joint effort between the county commissioners in this body ought to try to get some reconciled there, because there are some people hurting, and I wouldn't be surprised if there isn't family members of some of these boards that have gone through it. Myself, I had COVID pneumonia back in November, I went to Douglas, because like Bruce said, no way in hell would I go to this hospital, the care there's, it's, it's not like it was when it was run by the county. So anyway, we just implore you to consider thinking outside the box and how we can put some pressure on them as a community, as a body here, and, and maybe alongside with the county commissioners, so.
Any, any questions for Mr. Sabrowski? Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to make a comment, because the press always has field days with me in particular. There are good people that work at that hospital.
I know.
Not everybody, but there are some really good people there, and so I don't want to make a blanket station, statement when I say I wouldn't go there, that the place is bad. I, I, I'm speaking overall, as a whole, the way it's ran, the management company, but you talked about civil liberties, well, they have rights too, as a private business, just like any other company, and I don't like it any more than you do, but I just, I really don't think there's a lot we can do about it. If, if there was, I think you know me well enough, Dan, I'd be leading the charge.
I believe you, Bruce.
I just, I just don't think we have.
And I'm with you on that comment, because I know people that work there, but the, the corporate structure of Banner Health is abysmal, to say the least.
I agree.
And that trickles down into actual quality of care we're getting as a community.
Agreed.
Like I say, I'm just asking you guys to think outside the box a little bit, we'll be, you know, we've been hounding our legislators at the state level, they're not done with it yet either, so, again, a private business, you're looking at one of the biggest proponents of private business and free enterprise you'll ever find, but there's just something about a private business, especially either their employees or even their patrons, to, you know, I mean, we haven't gone down the road of vaccine passports, but come on, there's, there's a, there's a line that crosses. You, you shouldn't be able to, as a private business, dictate my personal health, or my, what I put in my body to enter your business, there's something, doesn't sit right there.
Just as a follow-up, I will tell you, I, I looked at the Cheyenne Regional Report this morning, in fact, and these numbers are not going to be exact in my brain, because I glanced at it, I believe we had 19 new cases of COVID, and 17 of them are fully vaccinated people. So as far as I'm concerned, the vaccine, the mask, none of it's working, none of it's been working, I've been saying it from day one, and I'm not a doctor, though, so nobody listens, and that's fine, but.
But I follow doctors that have put their.
My son's a doctor, and he, so he was the one I trusted in this, and I'm glad I did, but I still think a private business has the right to say, you don't come through our doors, no shoes, no shirt, no service, no vaccine, no mask, no whatever.
See a loved one?
I, I understand.
There's, there's lines that are being crossed that don't sit well.
There are, there are emotional lines that don't sit well, and I agree with you.
You don't say zero thought on it anymore, think outside the box.
What I would ask is you or anyone else in our community that has any ideas for this council that we could use to put teeth behind this, please reach out to us, our emails are available on the city website, and it'll give us something to, to talk about, and maybe we can come up with something or some way that we can help our community.
And we'll be discussing with county commissioners too, but we will be, if we can come up with stuff too, and work with our legislators, we're going to keep on it. We got to, we got to maintain our freedoms.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Eric Paulson. I live at 1732 Westridge Circle. I'm here in support of Mike tonight. I don't think he did his story justice, to be completely honest with you. He had woken up, man wakes up early every morning, he's self, self-made man, he owns his own business as a mechanic, he's got to take his kids to school, because it's important to him that he plays a role in his children's life every morning. I can't tell you how many of you have probably had those conversations with your daughter or son on the way to school, and you find out who they're dating, who they're seeing in their lives, who their new friends are, the new dramas that are unfolding at school, these are all very important things that happen in our lives that help to make us better parents. You drop your kid off at the crosswalk, it's a cold day, you're worried your kid's got enough clothes on, your kid gets out of your car and starts across the street and then gets hit by a car who's going too fast in a school zone. So many factors could come into play, I don't want to focus on the guy speeding, don't want to focus on all that, but when your kid gets taken to the hospital and you get a call and you say, yeah, your kid has a severe concussion and they're in the emergency room, and you drive on over to that hospital, and then all the hospital staff wants to focus on right now is whether or not you're wearing a mask or whether you're vaccinated. The only desire in any father's life at this point in time is to get into that ER room and make sure their child is okay. I think it, I understand it is a private business, but it is your guys' job as a city council to protect our rights as citizens. Less than 40, I believe, last numbers I checked, 46% of the people in this state are unvaccinated. So that means nearly half of your constituents, if their child is injured in the hospital in the ER room, they're not going to be allowed to see him. Your child could be dying, and you don't get to say your final goodbyes to your child. That's what this amounts to. Thank goodness it didn't get to that effect today, but, I mean, let's not, let's not hold any qualms here, this is not a private business matter. Medicare at this level, especially with the importance they're putting on COVID and these vaccinations and everything, it's more important than ever that we, as someone said before me, have confidence in our healthcare system. And I won't lie, I think there is some problems there, because Banner Health has paid the county and the city over $100 million over the course of the next 10 years to bring their business here. They've promised all sorts of jobs and improving our economy, economy and our community, but what are we sacrificing for that? I, I can't speak to you guys, I don't, I don't like to attribute malicious content to what a lot of people are just unaware of, but there are people here that are making money off the fact that we allow Banner Health to just operate the way they're operating, and then we hide it under a guise of private business. If we want ideas on how we can maybe fix the issue, we have to have handicap ramps outside of every business we have in this city. We have to have parking spots, I mean, we have 30 of them outside of Walmart, I don't even think we have 30 handicap people in Casper, but, that's a joke, okay. But with that being said, why is it so far, so far of a stretch to think that you have to have a handicap ramp to allow people who can't walk into the building, but yet no accommodations are made for people who refuse to get a vaccine shot? It really strikes me that this is a human rights issue. This is not a political issue, people want to say, oh, it's Trumpers or it's right-wingers who, who just refuse to listen to, to vaccine mandates. I don't believe it's that. I believe it's the right of any father, any parent to go see their child when they're in an ER, when they're in a life-threatening condition. If they need to make consolidations for us to make that happen, I think that should be part of the price of doing business here in Casper, Wyoming. Thanks for your time.
Any questions? Go ahead, Councilman Gamroth.
Thank you, sir, for coming to speak to us tonight. Did I hear you correctly that Wyoming Medical Center is not allowing people inside the doors that are unvaccinated, is that what you had stated?
Into the ER, yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm Brad Turner, I live up in College Heights. I would like to bring up several points about Wyoming Medical Center, I know you guys call it a private entity, a private business, the fact is that taxpayers funded both by the federal tax and the state tax, they take Medicare, they take Title 19, they are taxpayers funded, the taxpayer subsidies that puts them under the eye of the government, local, state, and federal. Now I was denied entrance into the ER to see my own daughter, with an emergency situation she was brought there by ambulance. I am deaf, I needed someone to help me communicate with the doctors and stuff. Their policy of one person in the emergency room. Their policy of one person in the emergency room cannot interfere with the ADA law. I brought my wife with me to the scene and were helping communicate. They denied any access on that. Your COVID policy can interfere with state, federal or local laws, especially concerning ADA laws. What parent or race, a man or child has the right to both parents. Both parents can offer different types of support. One could be emotional, other one could be decision-making, or together they can be decision-making. In medical consent for parents should be a mutual decision between parents and a child need both parents. It is very important. Now, Wyoming Medical Center is taking their COVID policy to a third and level, level, level three. And I've already had a discussion earlier today with the hospital administration about the COVID policies interfering with ADA rights. And I think that conversation went over quite well. However, the other issue is parental rights, parental consent for men or children or family members. The ADA law applies to anyone, no matter if they're a patient, a visitor, a family member of that patient or anything. There's no exception and there's no exception for parental rights. COVID policies and procedures cannot interfere with the rights and laws. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Oh, go ahead.
The one, the question that I had, and this would apply to all of those that have spoke here tonight, but have you folks gone to the hospital board at all to talk to them?
About the ADA, about my case personally.
Well, not only just, excuse me, not only just your case, but the overall policies of the hospital. They have a board of directors. Have you folks gone to them to talk to them at all? That's the one thing I'm interested in is because that, to me, would be where we ought to start, is with the hospital board to get them to change their policy or at least have them try to explain to you why they're doing what they are. They have eased it some. You can take two people into the hospital now. My wife was there for surgery on Thursday last week. I had no problem getting in. They called me twice while she was in the operating room to give me her status. They called me again in the recovery room. So from that standpoint, I understand yours was an emergency situation, but they seem to be handling that part of it quite well. And the one thing that they are as much worried about as anything is not necessarily whether you personally have it or not, but they're in contact with you and then they go to the next patient and transmit what you have to the next patient. And that is one of their biggest concerns, is transmitting various infections and things like that from patient to patient. So just something to think about and a question I would ask about going to the hospital board.
No, it's illogical because the person I brought to help me, we live in the same household. So how does that prevent, cause more spread than if I came in? I'm from a different house. So I bring in another entrepreneur who's from a different household that prevents more spread. This is illogical. It's better to have two people from the same household than two people from two different households. It looks like I'm out of time.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to answer your question real quick. How are we supposed to go to the hospital board when we've got no trespassing? And I'm not allowed to be on there, otherwise I'll get arrested on hospital property unless it's a medical emergency, which I'll die before I go back there.
Anybody else that wants to come up? So this is exactly what I was going to talk about with, or what I was going to say with Councilmember Kathy. They do have a private board that you can talk to and talk to there about their policies. While that's not probably the answer everybody wants to hear, um, I know this council has has certainly been adamant about trying to stay out as much of business, private business as they possibly can. Um, and so we will take this and chat about it. I know our attorney would probably already say that there's not much we can do. And so unless I'm wrong about that, we can talk about that later. But we hear what you're saying. We know that it's frustrating. We know that you'll walk out and probably say, well, we didn't get anything accomplished. But hopefully this is a forum for you to express your views, which is still the, the beauty of the United States, where we can express our opinions and disagree. Thank you. Yep.
Just one final comment for you. I, I'm, I'm always one of those guys that take up the charge. So tomorrow I'll be reaching out to the hospital board of directors and I'll try to get a meeting with them myself so that I can personally get some answers that I can bring back to this council. And then maybe, maybe there is or is not something we can do. But I will give you my word that tomorrow I'll be in contact with them. I will get a meeting scheduled with them and I'll see what I can get done.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the fiscal year 2022 budget amendment number two. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight we have two exhibits. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Jill Johnson to J. Carter Napier dated February 11, 2022. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication is published in the Casper Star Tribune dated February 10, 2022.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As we discussed in work session maybe a week ago, uh, we are talking about a seven million dollar budget amendment to the FY22 budget that you passed back in June. The purpose of this amendment in large part is to roll forward projects that either weren't completed or weren't started from the previous fiscal year into this year so that the appropriate spending authority is in place. Uh, the other largest part, if you will, with regard to the seven million dollar requests that we have in front of you is with regard to just about four million dollars in the bail fill fund that we're moving into this fiscal year by way of spending authority in order to move forward on the, the cell development that we had hoped would take place later in the, the biennium, if you will, if I could use that term, with regard to the, to the rate increases that we talked about back in November. Uh, beyond that, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the, the other amendment impacts are relatively small and we would certainly ask for your favorable considerations this evening.
Thank you. Counsel will now listen to the public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask the individuals who wish to speak in favor of the fiscal year 2022 budget amendment number two to please approach the lectern. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the fiscal year 2022 budget amendment number two to please approach the lectern, those who wish to speak in opposition. There being no one to speak for or against the fiscal year 2022 budget amendment number two, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair to entertain a motion to by resolution authorize the fiscal year 2022 budget amendment number two.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Kathy, seconded by Councilmember Pollock. Discussion. Any amendments? Any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye? Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
I now declare the public hearing, declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the annual renewal of liquor licenses. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I thank you, Your Honor. We have four exhibits. Exhibit, exhibit number one, correspondence from Fleur Tremble to J. Carter Napier dated January 21, 2022. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication is published in the Casper Star Tribune dated January 31, 2022. That's the majority of licenses. Exhibit number three, affidavit of publication is published in the Casper Star Tribune dated February 11, 2022. And that's resort liquor license for the Hilton Garden. And exhibit number four, affidavit of website publication is published on the city of Casper website dated January 20, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, council had the opportunity to hear a comprehensive review with respect to the renewals that are in front of you this evening. You have about ninety approximately renewals that you are considering. Everything from restaurant licenses all the way to the full scope of a retail liquor license that, that you administer. Uh, we did discuss an amendment in pre-meeting that you may want to consider this evening with respect to one of your bar and grill license holders. Otherwise, uh, you do have some extension requests that are noted in your memo. You also have some of the smaller licenses that are not being renewed identified in your memo as well. And, uh, and would, would also suggest that pursuant to your favorable approval this evening potentially, uh, these licenses will go back into effect for the next operating year starting April 1.
Thank you. Counsel will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask the individuals who wish to speak in favor of the liquor licenses renewals, please approach the lectern.
Good evening, Mayor. Michael Reed, sixteen fifteen Licker Drive. Uh, I am a part owner of one of those licenses, Tin Shack LLC, doing businesses, pop or wine and spirits. I'm here this evening because I got an email from your licensing specialist asking who the president of the liquor dealers, Natrona County Liquor Dealers Association was. And unfortunately, the Natrona County Liquor Dealers Association is no more. Unfortunately, and I say that unfortunately, but it's just how it is. Three of us are on the state, Wyoming State Liquor Association Board, myself, Andy from Mesa and geez, no brains, Matt Galloway. Uh, so we, we are in tune to what's happening. So if you've got any questions, you could call any of us and we'd certainly be willing to answer. Uh, I don't think you'll see the association go back together. Uh, I would also like to give you an update on the TIPS program. I'm sure you're familiar with that. Last budget session, the legislature and the Department of Revenue Director, uh, cut the TIPS program from the budget. That was very unfortunate for everybody. The new Department of Revenue Director and the new Department of Liquor Division have asked the governor to put that back in the budget, which he has done. And as long as the legislature doesn't cut it, uh, we'll be, we'll be back in business on July 1st and we'll be training people again. So just wanted to give you an update.
Thanks for all the updates, Mike. Appreciate it. Any questions for Mike? All right. Thanks again, we appreciate it. Any others who wish to speak in favor? Okay. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the liquor license renewals to please approach the lectern. Okay, there being no others to speak for or against the liquor license, uh, license renewals, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair to entertain a motion to by minute action authorize the liquor license renewals.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Freel, seconded by Councilmember Sutherland. Discussion. Any amendments?
One.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Nell.
The amendment I would like to offer is that we accept the resignation or the non-renewal of the Grace Partners Bar and Grill License, um, as we just found out today. So our report's already been filed with the public, so we want to let them know that that license will be coming available as they have chosen to not renew.
Is that what you were going to do?
That's exactly what I was going to do, so I'll second it.
Okay, got a second. Um, those in favor? Say aye. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Please record the vote for the amendment, I suppose.
With all members voting aye, motion to amend passed.
Thank you. Any other amendments? Any abstentions or nay votes? Okay, all voting aye? Say aye. Aye. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed as amended.
So many times we can say aye.
Are you having fun?
Yeah. Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance.
Oh, hold on a second, we need Amber. Just forget about her. Sorry, Councilmember. The Vice Mayor reminded me you were still gone, so. Thanks, Steve. Please read the ordinance on three, uh, third reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a zone change of 104 and 110 South Beverly Street, comprising portions of Lot 13 and 14 and a vacated strip of former Beverly Street right of way, Block Two, Beverly Edition subdivision in the city of Casper, Wyoming.
Thank you. Chair to entertain a motion to approve on third reading, the ordinance just read.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Inga Bretson, seconded by Councilmember Pollock. Counsel will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Okay. Any discussion on third reading? Any amendments? Okay. Any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye? Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance amending section 1.16.010, ward boundaries described election districts of the Casper Municipal Code.
Thank you. Chair to entertain a motion to approve on second reading, the ordinance just read.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Gamroth, seconded by Councilmember Inga Bretson. Counsel will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Any discussion? Any amendments? Any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye? Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 10A1, a Wolf Creek 10 Edition. Item 10A2, a purchase of a passenger bus from Creative Bus Sales. Item 10A3, a contract with Western Research for the Barnund Streetscape. Item 10A4, acceptance of a Wyoming Department of Homeland Security grant. Item 10A5, an agreement with Wired Electric for the Ice Arena Lighting Replacement Project. Item 10A6, a lease with Casper Soccer Club for the North Casper Soccer Complex.
Thank you. Chair to entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Pollock, seconded by Vice Mayor Freel. Mr. City Manager, do you have any comments on any of these items?
I do not, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye? Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the consent minute action titles.
Item 11A1, appointing Martin J. Axland to the Civil Service Commission. Item 11A2, a purchase of six new police vehicles from Grindr Motors. And item 11A3, appointing Councilmember Sutherland and reappointing Councilmember Nell to the Central Wyoming Regional Water System Joint Power Board.
Thank you. The chair to entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Freel, seconded by Councilmember, was it Pollock? Uh, Councilmember Pollock. Any abstentions or nay votes?
Will abstain from our own.
Noting the abstentions. Okay, all voting aye? Please record the vote.
With the abstention of Councilmembers Sutherland and Nell on the appointments, and all is voting aye, motion passed.
Thank you. Now is the time we ask council members to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. We'll start with you, Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Gamroth.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of updates. DDA board meeting last Wednesday. I missed, uh, some of it, so apologies to the board for that. But there was discussion of collaborating with the city more on development projects, just having a little bit more of a, a working relationship with the city, uh, piggybacking on maybe some of the city's ideas for development, how that can complement or supplement the activities of the DDA. And so, uh, glad to see collaboration. I always, uh, you know, I think our community suffers from people operating in silos, not reaching out to people to partner with and collaborate with. So I'm glad the DDA board, uh, is exploring those opportunities. Casper Housing Authority broke ground on the Liberty Square Apartments near 12th and Beverly on Saturday. There are other facilities like Raven Crest, Center Point and the old Roosevelt High School all have a great track record. So I'm excited to see, uh, that development continue and be finished at some point. And then also just wanted to remind people, the Casper Area Metropolitan Planning Organization will be having an open house this Thursday from five to seven here at City Hall. And that's to solicit feedback on their East Yellowstone. to solicit feedback on their East Yellowstone Intersection Improvement Study, and there included recommendations. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Inga Bretson.
I went to the Leisure Board Services Meeting, and the one thing we did was change the name. It is Parks and Recreation. So, and then Fort Casper, we had a meeting and talked about some ideas to kind of help get Fort Casper and do some other things to kind of bring some of the profitability up. So they are looking into multiple different things of doing that. And then baseball is really taking off to the point where apparently with lack of coaches and facilities, they're actually having to turn kiddos away. So that's it.
Thank you. Council member Pollock.
Thank you. I do have an MPO Policy Committee meeting this Thursday, so next week I'll be able to report back on that. And then wanted to let folks know that I will be one of the council representatives for the WAM conference. So if there's anything WAM related that I should know before heading there, please feel free to email me or get in touch in advance that that's happening mid next week. I'll be heading down to Cheyenne to represent the city of Casper.
Thank you. Council member Nell.
I just a couple of things. Number one, we have snow coming tonight and tomorrow. Anywhere from two to five inches, please be kind to your neighbors. Shovel your walks if you can so that people can pass. Remember, we have ADA folks who, who really need to be able to pass. So if you get an opportunity, shovel your walks. And lastly, I just want to give a shout out to the city finance department, namely Jill. We had a, a Joint Powers Water Board meeting today, and the information that she brought us today was, was quite substantial, and it's going to do great things for the Joint Powers Water Boy Board financially. So thank you for your hard work and considering them when you did your job. So a shout out to you and your department. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Sutherland.
Just a couple of things. So there was an AMCO reuse agreement Joint Powers Board meeting last week. One of the key updates there is that the contract between the board and refined properties will be ending, and that's largely due to that agency feeling like it would be the best interest of the board to work with a firm that has more specific experience developing brownfield and impacted properties. So it's kind of in motion and underway figuring out how to adapt given the end of that contract. But it does seem like everybody's in agreement that it's, it's going to be a, it's a good recommendation on their behalf, and that it'll be good for the area moving forward. So that's relatively significant. I will also be at WAM next week, so let me know if there's anything specific that you want me to be talking about there. So that's it.
Thank you. Council member Kathy.
Went to the water board meeting, and councilman Nell has mentioned what went on there. But last Friday evening, the police department had their 2021 awards ceremony, and I think there are some things that the public ought to hear, and this was the opening intro at that particular ceremony. And in 2021, CPD responded to 51,666 calls for service, which included 42,073 calls for patrol, 4,000 of which were priority one calls, which equates to 11 calls a day. And a priority one call is any situation that is life threatening in nature, in progress, or requires immediate attention. This does not include family fights, suicidal subjects, or suspicious persons. Animal Control responded to 55,000, 5,590 calls for service, 4,500 of which being for stray animals or general animal problems. Community service officers responded to 4,003 calls for service. Also, the Casper Natrona County Public Safety Communications Center, which covers all of Natrona County, answered 169,426 calls for service, 30,000 of which were 911 calls, which equates to 460 calls a day, and they have figured that 90% of those were answered within 10 seconds. So I think the police departments and the EMS and fire within the county deserve a big shout out at a boy for their quality of service and for being able to handle all of these, and especially to the people at the communications center and our police department.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Well, a lot of stuff's been covered. So one thing, there was an email that was sent to a couple of us. Maybe we all got it in reference to the alarms themselves. But when we do have that discussion, it's a valid point that you have some people that pay for two, three, 10 alarms, but on the billing, it never shows exactly where those alarms are at. It, you know, it gets sent to their business address, their home address, but that's not necessarily where the alarm's at. So I'd like to see if we can have a discussion about getting that added on to the bills.
Do you want that on a work session? Is that what you're saying? Is that something everybody would be okay having on there? Carter, can we get that on a work session?
Same work session. We're talking about the alarms.
Oh, adding that on to that. Add that on. Carter, can we get that added on to that?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Great. Thank you so much. Anything else?
No.
Just a couple of things from, from my list. We have council of government meeting, the vice mayor and I do, with county commissioners and the other mayors to talk about items in and around the community. And then on Friday, the LGBTQ meeting, we have on that. And to let you know that we are moving forward in the discussion of the ordinance, that we're trying to figure out what we're trying to make that look most beneficial for the community. So hopefully we'll have more information in the coming weeks. So just wanted to let you know. Other than that, that's all I've got. So the next meetings of the city council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM on Tuesday, February 22, 2022, in the council chambers, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, March 1, 2022, in the council chambers as well. A notice of an executive session to take place at this date and during this meeting was given. We have a matter to discuss regarding personnel, land acquisition, and security. Therefore, the chair to entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session, and at the conclusion of the executive session, to reconvene the regular meeting solely for the purposes of adjournment for this regular meeting.
So moved.
Moved by vice mayor Freel, seconded by council member Sutherland. There being a majority of members present in a motion to adjourn to an executive session, have you been moved and seconded? And that motion requiring a two-thirds majority of the council present. Any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye? Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
A greater than two-thirds majority of the council present voted in favor of the motion. We are hereby adjourned into executive session.
Registration's due to five, so.
We have deliberated on personnel, land acquisition, and security matter before us in the executive session. On the executive session, there was a motion and a second to that motion to adjourn the executive session and reconvene our regular council meeting called tonight. The motion passed, and I call the regular meeting of the Casper City Council back to order. Council will now discuss the resolution for the environmental site assessment for the Trihydro Corporation. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it will be open for discussion by council. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution authorizing an agreement with Trihydro Corporation to complete phase to environmental site settlement.
I need a motion.
So moved. So moved.
Moved by council member Nell, seconded by council member Kathy. City manager, I don't think he has a report. Any discussion? Any amendments? Abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye? Please record the vote. Chair to entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by councilman Kathy, seconded by council member Pollock. Any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye? Please record the vote. Meetings adjourned.